Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 22 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And firstly, if you have a cellphone or pager or any other device that might go off during the course of the meeting, we would ask that you silence those or turn them off. If you are here to talk to us and you are not the applicant, there are signup sheets that are on the table right outside the chambers. If you'd complete that, give it to our Commission Secretary, we would be happy to hear you. And with that, we'll get on to approval of the April 8 minutes. Any discussion? We have a motion, a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Continuance requests.
We have four uncontested requests for continuances, items 26 through 29, all requests to defer until May the 13th.
Did anyone come down today to talk to us about items 26 through 29 on our agenda?
Move the continuances.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
There are three new requests for continuance. Item 8 is PC 10247, request to defer until May the 27th. Item 14 is PUD 1414, a request to defer until May the 13th. And item 17, SPUD 556, request to defer until May the 13th.
Same question again. Did anyone come to talk to us about item 8, 14, or 17 on our agenda? Sir, he'd come up to the microphone. You would give us your name and address, please.
Harry Johnson, address 13001 North Morgan Road, Yukon, Oklahoma.
And you came to talk to us about which case?
Case 10247. I'd like to continue that to the second Thursday in May.
Number eight, or?
Yeah, number eight.
That's what I thought.
We have that request.
Now, you're not the applicant.
Blue Steen Affiliates, I'm the manager. It's an LLC.
Okay. And you want it to be continued?
That's right. Something came up just this morning, and I did email to Ywanda.
And there's no one protesting that continuance clearly, so that's fine.
Not at all.
Thank you.
That it?
Anyone else? Motion?
Move the new continuance requests.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to continue items 8, 14, and 17. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from anyone in the audience? Okay. On to the consent docket.
We have three items on the consent docket today. Item 1 is V3-5725. Item 2 is PC 10248. Item 3 is C6207, which is final plat of the Commons of Greenlee Chase. We do have a protest.
We do have someone to talk to us on item 3. Anyone to talk to us on items 1 or 2?
I'm here for item 1.
Are you in support or in opposition?
Oh, in support.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve items 1 and 2. Cast your votes. And there, that's approved. Now we'll hear item 3 in order, which is now.
And item 3 again is C6207, final plat of the Commons of Greenlee Chase, Ward 5.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Billen, Craft and Tool Sparks, representing the applicant. And I'll just go ahead and take a seat and listen to what's said, and then I'll respond to that.
Okay. Marilyn Turner.
Hi.
If you would give us your name and address, please.
My name's Marilyn Turner. I live at East Lake Patio Homes, 12235 High Meadow Court. I'm the president of our homeowners association. We're a 176-unit homeowners association that has been rebuilt since the tornado wiped us out. Basically, our concern is having a group of duplexes this close to us that we're afraid the overflow of people without their no amenities listed. We have 33 acres of land, pools, tennis courts, walking trails. We want to protect ourselves from the influx of those people. We really want a good fence, and we want respect of our properties from this group. Other than that, we aren't objecting as long as they follow our landscape easement and put us up a good fence.
Well, we don't have any ability to cause them to put up a fence. We can't require fencing between residential zoning districts, which these both would be. And as far as somebody walking across the street and coming into your area, that would be something that you would have to police. It's not something we can control. We're here strictly as a land use body to determine whether this is an appropriate land use.
Well, we understand, you know, we don't own the property, therefore, they can do what they want to with it. And they are doing the proper things as far as detention and things like that, so we support them on that. So, I thought from the last meeting, you know, that you guys were recommending a fence.
We don't have any ability to require that. Am I right, Susan? Am I wrong, Nick?
I would point out, this is a final plat.
Yes.
We're beyond the zoning phase, and this is a final plat.
And we've approved the preliminary.
Which was approved at preliminary, correct.
And this plat has been shifted over from the preliminary, and I understand it's because part of it had fallen into a floodplain, and so it was totally moved to the right, which I can understand, so, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Kendall?
Yes, in regards to this particular project, if you recall, this is a multifamily R4 zoning. We are coming in with the duplexes adjacent to their quadplexes. The final plat that you see is in complete compliance with the approved preliminary plat, except for we did reduce it by two units, and I'll be happy to visit with Ms. Turner in regards to the fence. But at this point, we agree to both two TEs and ask for your approval.
Okay. Motion to approve item 3?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve item 3. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 4 is SPUD 558, which is an application by Lighthouse Sports Fitness and Health to rezone 3337 West Hefner Road from R4 General Residential to SPUD 558 in Ward 8.
I'm Randy Hill with ED Hill Surveying and Engineering, and representing the applicant. And Dean Wertz, who's the manager of the lighthouse, is here as well. And we'd be happy to answer any questions. We do agree with the summary of technical evaluations as amended, and would ask for your approval. This is actually just the right-of-way. There was some surplus right-of-way after the highway was built and that we purchased, and actually have been using part of it for road access and parking, but it hasn't, at this point, been rezoned as a part of a PUD or SUD, and so we're coming in for that right now.
And you are in agreement with all the TEs?
Yes, sir.
Randy? Discussion? This reason for this request is to allow a seasonal snow cone stand.
That is one of the things, yeah.
And future expansion.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're talking about an acre and a half of ground here, and I don't see anything in this PUD that really talks about what you intend to do with your future expansion. It's just a whale of a big snow cone stand.
The snow cone stand actually is out there right now.
I know it is. Been there for years.
Right. The, there's really no plan for expansion right now. We're using that for our obstacle course and ropes course. We continue, we plan to continue to do that. We have a trail, a jogging trail, that runs along the highway right-of-way in that area. In the summertime, we have kids camps out there, and we intend to continue to use it for that. In the original PUD, we do have allowance for expansion. We do have extra parking, so we actually could, at some point, expand the lighthouse facility, and, but...
I'm not necessarily opposed to expanding the lighthouse facility, maybe using this for additional parking, you know, whatever. But this particular SPUD, to me, is just wide open. It says it's for a snow cone stand. Well, we'll probably move it over there, maybe. But then, it also says eating establishments, fast food, drive-through windows.
That's just to allow the snow cone stand.
I got it. But I think this needs some work. I think you need to come back and tell us what your real intent for this, one and a half acres is, rather than have it as wide open as this, that we may want to expand something on it someday, sorta, kinda.
That is the intent. There isn't any other intent right now.
Well, then, are you premature?
No, I mean, we're just zoning it for what we're using it for right now, basically.
Well, then, we can delete and permit future expansion.
Well, I really don't think that's what they want, but we could, yes.
You know, the eating establishments, we've said it won't exceed 600 square feet, which is about twice as big as the snow cone stand, just so we would make sure we had enough to cover the snow cone stand. So, I mean, it's not really planned as any kind of eating establishment.
Well, let me back up then.
Okay.
Is this SPUD consistent with the zoning on the rest of the lighthouse? Is it broader, or is it narrower?
It is narrower.
In what respect?
Basically, what we've said is we can use that community recreation and the participant recreation and the snow cone stand, basically. And obviously, we'd like to move forward with it so that the snow cone stand can be open by this summer. They have summer camps out there, and it's a place for the kids to go.
How has the snow cone stand operated all these years where it is?
It was thought that it was legal, and the city, they were cited by the city inspections that they weren't legal. And it was found that it was just a little outside the area that was zoned.
So now, the plan is to move the snow cone stand into this area before you?
It's not going to move at all. It'll be exactly where it is today. It'll just be in compliance.
Oh, it's already in this area?
It's already in that area, yes.
Yeah, I thought it was a little bit to the east. Okay. Well, I agree with Chairman, then, perhaps we could just modify it for the snow cone stand, and when you want expansion, you could come back. Or you can continue it, figure out what expansion you want, and tell us now.
Well, the, it's not really expansion. It's the existing use for the community recreation. We have our ropes course and our obstacle course there today.
Today, it's zoned R4. Is that correct?
That's, yes.
So how are you operating the ropes course in R4 now? Is it legal or illegal?
I think it's legal all the way, according to the staff report.
Well, I believe it is.
He's an R4 with commercial use fitness center, so he's, they're not out of compliance.
But that's my point.
We had to do a PUD on the R4 to get to that point. That's why the original PUD was done.
Well, I understand. But my point is, everything you're doing today, from looking at the staff report, appears to be legal, with the exception of your problem with the snow cone stand. So as the chairman suggested, if we're really just talking about legalizing the snow cone stand, we could delete the, permit future expansion from this application, and if you want to then expand in some way that's not consistent with what you already have, you could come back to us.
Is there a part of the expansion, just so I can understand, is there a part of the expansion that would be allowed in this as a C1 use that's inappropriate from your standpoint?
My problem with this application is, I don't know. It is so broad, I don't know what you're proposing and what this future expansion may be. I know that we've got potentially a 600-square-foot snow cone stand, which is a lot of snow cones. And I guess I can drive up to it, because it's going to have a drive-through window, which makes sense for the snow cones. I'm not saying that. But we're looking at an acre and a half of land here that, just this, the way this is written, to me, I don't understand what you're trying to do.
Well, they've slowly encroached out into this area that they picked up, and it's those uses, like the ropes course, the jogging trails, even got some parking and drives in the area, they're inconsistent with the R4 zoning that's in place. So, they need to, they definitely need to accommodate those plus the snow cone stand. But the way it is written, it would allow building expansion out into that area if they chose to do so.
As long as we still meet the open space requirements and all that?
They'd have to meet all the other requirements.
Well, that's the problem. What are the requirements? There are no requirements in this SPUD. For example?
They've got the two uses limited, the community recreation, and then we added the building, your standard building facade treatments, one of the TEs.
One more question. The under, and I guess this is for you, JJ. The rest of this complex is zoned under one document, right? Why wasn't that one amended to just include this property when they came up with additional, if everything was going to be consistent?
The ordinance allows for administrative minor amendments to PUDs, but you can't add to...
Well, what I'm saying is, they could come back with that. I know they don't want to open that, probably don't want to open that box up.
Do a PUD over the entire site.
That's part of my problem with this application. This just says, okay, we'll build some buildings there. We may have these building restrictions that we put in, what is it, TE 2?
Yeah, we added, if any permanent structure that's constructed there will meet your requirement that the staff requested.
I really wish you'd take a couple of weeks and try to refine what we're doing here, because I have...
We're really just trying to bring the parking lot, the drive, the snow cone stand, all into compliance, basically.
Well, I can bring all of it into compliance.
Also agreeing to do landscaping and all that sort of thing as a part of it as well, and if any structure would be built over any part of it that's permanent, it would have to meet those additional requirements. We don't have any structure planned at the present time.
Then, and I agree with everything Commissioner Gales is saying, because when I read this, it's like one of those blanket, we can do whatever we want to do, when we want to do it. And this is my opinion, and Commissioner Gales and others on the commission, is that that's not the way that I think we want to see things happen. And just as you said, you want to bring the parking lot, the snow cone stand into compliance, that's what this application should say, without, we can do future expansion based upon whatever we want to do. Delete that, and just confine it to what it is you're really doing for this purpose, parking lot, snow cone stand, and I'm in favor of it totally, you know, but the rest of it's too, way too broad.
Yeah, I'm not adverse to the lighthouse expanding or any of that. I'm just not comfortable with this SPUD the way it is. It just seems like it's a blank slate.
I think if I could, Randy, perhaps the concern comes from the language of the staff report. Your base zoning districts are R4 with these extra uses for the physical, the personal fitness place. If you read this first couple of lines describing, in section 1 and 2 of the staff report, what it says was, is your new SPUD will be developed in accordance with C1. And then the second part of that, which is a different zoning district than what you have as your underlying base district, maybe that was ill-intended, but the second portion says that in addition to C1, you want one, these other three units. So it appears that you've asked for an underlying change in your R4 and three additional units. That may not have been your intended application. So I think as we kind of get a grip on it, it appears to be a broader application, maybe than you intended, and that if your intent is just to operate the lighthouse, I got it, I think everybody's clearly in favor of that, I think the wording here may be a little inartful to capture what your intent is. And I think that's where we're kind of getting a bit hung up on this particular one. So maybe there's some guidance there, if you could maybe clean that up a little bit. Or if that's not your intent, then perhaps you could be clearer about what your ask is.
Well, that's our intent, so...
You want to do C1 plus these three uses? Or you want to do R4 for personal fitness plus these three uses? There's a difference.
Not only is there a difference, but I think Commissioner Williams will remember, I don't know if one else, when we zoned the lighthouse originally, there was a great deal of discussion on what the underlying district should be, and that the R4 should remain, because it was a residential use, even though we were providing other activities, that PUD was an R4 PUD for a reason. Now, this is different, and this is, to me, very broad, and I...
And it may just be the C1 that you're asking for, for this particular strip, but it's not exactly abundantly clear.
Well, that, and frankly, I'm not sure this is consistent with what Randy said he really wants to do. I think it's a little more broad than that, but in any event, Randy, I can't support it the way it is. I'd like for you to go back and fix it, because I think it's a good thing.
I hear what you're saying. I will, if we could do a two-week continuance, we'll make changes here this week.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Second, anywhere?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to continue item 4 for two weeks. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
You continue. Thank you.
Item 5 is C6205, which is a preliminary plat of the Grove South in Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Jade Knowles. David Box has handed out an exhibit that will show some of the pictures of what's existing out in the area. I think there's been some concern, maybe some confusion in regard to what we have planned, what's around the area. When we rezoned this property several years ago, keep in mind, this zoning goes from 178th Street to 192nd, it goes from Portland over to May, and in the PUD, we can provide 2,100 units. We're not asking to expand that at all. What we've done is, we've come in and determined, based on the development that has occurred on the other side of May, based on the development that we've actually done at this corner, the plat that you see, we think is in keeping and appropriate for development at this site. As you look at the exhibits that David handed out, first of all, you have an opportunity to see a portion of our property, which the middle, the mid, the middle road that you see is May Avenue. So on the east side is Valencia, another developer, and then Caliber is on the west side. If you go to the next exhibit, it shows that we've got a school. We have two final plats that have been approved, and this will be the third phase of development that we plan on developing. I thought it'd be good to give those of you all that have not had the opportunity to drive it, to see a little bit about what's going on in the Grove. And so the pictures that you see here show an example of the entrance, it shows an example of the streets, the homes that are being constructed. Now, there's covenants that apply uniformly throughout the development, and the minimum size home that can be built within this area, being an entire section, is 1,400 square feet. But this gives you an idea of what's out there. One of the things that I think you all always look at is, are we looking at a development, and in this case, there'll be multiple phases, because it's an entire section, but are we looking at a development that will provide for the needs of the community, the needs of the people that reside there? So the next example is a health facility that costs about a million and a half dollars that everybody that buys within this section has the opportunity to go to and utilize. The next example is the school that is within this section, and that, of course, is a driving force for any development that you see in the area. As I looked at this, and the last exhibit shows a house at 4805 North Lynn, and that's a house that was built in 1953. It was built, it was 910 square feet when it was built. There was an expansion to it, and it's now 1,200 and some change. But this is an example of, you know, in the 50s, there were certain kind of developments that occurred, and we're seeing a change in developments going back to homes that are more similar to this kind of home. Now, this is a lot smaller than the homes that we will build. This happened to be a home that I grew up in, so, single-car garage and 910 square feet, and it worked pretty well for our family. But minimum here, 1,400 square feet, 80% brick, standard roof pitch, so we think that what we're proposing is appropriate. And if you look at our opportunities, what we have is an entire section. Well, in that entire section, we have 83.97 acres of green belt open space. And when I talk about green belt, I'm talking about areas that you can walk in, areas you can exercise, doesn't include the school grounds, but that comes to about 20% of the 420 acres that we anticipate being developed for residential within this property. So this property, being as large as it is, provides opportunities that otherwise you wouldn't have. And I know open space and those issues are always a matter that this commission is very concerned about. But we do have 83 acres within the section, and one of the TEs wants to make sure that we will provide pedestrian access. We have no problem agreeing to that. In fact, when you look at the TEs, we can agree with... In fact, when you look at the TEs, we can agree with TE 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7. On 4, I think it's important to note, and I have Steve Hoffner here, who's a traffic engineer, and this is the approximate area that the development that we want to develop is. But the last preliminary plat was approved with a 26-foot collector. And then the two final plats that you see here were approved with 26-foot, actually not collector, but residential street. Mr. Hoffner thinks that that is appropriate based on traffic calming, based on wanting to make sure you don't have a raceway and a speedway. We appreciate and understand that if we develop commercial, then when we develop commercial, if it's connecting up to the ring road, then we think 32 feet is appropriate. So if you approve this today, then I'll need to, to work with your staff and we'll need to get an administrative amendment to the PUD, because the PUD said a collector street of 32 feet. So I wasn't involved in the plats, but the good news is, our traffic expert thinks that you all made the right decision, 26 feet is the right thing, so.
Whether we knew it or not.
Right, right. Very Lodge, I'm going to have you come up. Any questions to me?
Dennis, while he's coming up.
Yes.
You referred to the TE 4 and the loop street. I really don't have a problem with the loop street being 26 feet adjacent to the residential areas. But when you get out into the commercial areas, there it probably should be a collector street. So can we maybe go half and half there? And then the other concern I had, that I wish you'd address, is this plat, obviously is not going to develop out all at once, it's going to develop over time, but it provides for 400 lots. And I would like to see that loop street, including through the connector or through the commercial, constructed before we get too far into the development of this. They may be the 100 or 200 lot level. Can you address those issues?
I can. I'm going to let Mr. Hoffner address them, those are good questions. Okay. Steve Hoffner with Traffic Engineering Consultants, 6000 Southwestern here in Oklahoma City. In response to your concerns, we, I formulated a letter that I believe is part of the packet. I understand that there's, we are one short, so I appreciate you sharing that. But in that letter, what we asked the developer to do, and he agreed to it, that we would make part of the commitment, is that a single entrance would be constructed at the time the first home is platted in that, this particular area, this only this, what's being preliminary platted today. Up to 100 homes, that single point of access would be adequate. Once they plat above 100, 101 homes, we've asked that the second point of access be provided, that being the access either over to May or to 178th. We're anticipating that the 1 to 178th would be the first one constructed. And then even at 301 homes, we've asked that the ring road be extended on around, once that's platted, not necessarily built, but once the, they're plating above 300 homes, that the, the ring road be completed on around a tie to the existing ring road.
So you're saying the ring road at 301, that's 75% built out, basically?
Correct.
And then the ring road as a 24-foot street?
In, in residential areas. If we get into commercial, then it would need to be 32.
It would be 32 out in the commercial.
Correct. And keep in mind that from 100 to 300 homes, there's still, there's still two accesses, one to 178th and one to May Avenue.
But 101 to 300 would look a lot better if it was 101 to 200.
To 200.
I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned with 300 homes in here with only two ways in and out. And I know what the suburbs say and all that. It's just that, you know, we have, have so much going on here, and we have the opportunity to do something about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Dennis.
Yes, yes.
Dennis, looking at the impact and looking at the photographs that you presented to us, I'd like to, for you to address the issue of what are you doing concerning the garage front impacts that we've, we've put some time into studying. It seemed like the photographs all show garages facing the front, and all the garages were protruding further than the building line. And are you doing some things other than two trees to, to address the garage front impact?
At, at this stage, I mean, they, they have not.
Are you planning with them?
Yeah, they have not, they have, they are going to comply with your regulations. There are some homes that you could put side entry garages in, but they haven't made a decision on how many and which one. So that's post, our post-plat stage.
My question related to James's question is, do your clients have a copy of our policy on garage fronts? I would suggest that they have that copy because it also provides for street trees to be planted between the sidewalk and the curb, and different designs, different setbacks. And I just suggest that you get, make sure your client has that, so when they consider the garage front issue, they at least know what we've suggested could be done, could be done to make this neighborhood more attractive.
What I'm hearing you saying is, at the final plat stage, maybe you want to have an answer to that?
You have to address it, isn't that right?
Yes.
Of how, how that's complied with or not.
Okay.
Because it, the, if you look at the document that we have, it's not only garage fronts, garages at side entrances, but there's some other alternatives that you don't have to have side entrance.
Okay. I, I will commit that my client, who is here today, Jade Knowles, on behalf of Calibur, not only we have time to review it, but at the final plat, we'll address that.
On this road, now, what is commercial and what is not? In the, in this, in that picture up there, if I could look at it.
If you could, the diagram, the, the area south of what's shown as subject.
Right.
The present time, Commissioner Hensley is zoned for commercial. And the commercial goes all the way to Portland and goes up. There are two things going on at the present time. ODOT is in the, is in the.
Right.
Mode of condemning land, and so we don't know ultimately how much land we'll have left on Portland for commercial, but there'll be commercial development on Portland. Second thing is, and your question goes to zoning, but my client believes that there is a high probability that the area just south of what's shown on that dotted line will still be developed for future residential, they'll be more residential even though it's zoned commercial. So that's why Mr. Hoffner stated it the way he did. If we do have commercial, we understand, we will put in the 32-foot street, but in all probability, we think that the area adjacent to the collector, next to the residential, will be developed for residential.
Okay. So the ring, it, it's not everything south of the ring road, it's just along the frontage?
Yeah.
Primarily, for lack of a better way to put it.
Yeah, I think there's a good possibility you might have some commercial along 178th. And when I say commercial office or whatever it might be.
Right.
But Jade firmly believes that the area just south of what we're asking to be platted will probably be a portion of it residential.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I will support what Commissioner Gale said about the ring road, though, and above 201 or 200 houses. I don't want to get behind on infrastructure again.
My client says yes.
Non-residential area down here, it will be collector standards.
Any other discussion, commissioners, or questions of the applicant? I'd like to know that Stewart's satisfied with what we're suggesting, if he would come out, please.
If he doesn't come, can I speak for him?
He, he should have heard me, but, there he is. Stewart, have you, you followed our discussion over the last few minutes on the ring road in particular?
I, I did get to hear a good portion of the discussion. I didn't hear all of it, though. Is there a particular question that you're?
Well, I want to know that you're comfortable with what we've agreed to here, which is the ring road will be completed as soon as 201 lots in this particular application are platted.
Now, so completion of that ring road include connections to either May Avenue or to 178th Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Just coming 100.
It does, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes, Stewart, on the diagram right here, the outlined area is the preliminary plat that's here today. And what we've said is that you have a, it's actually a four-lane roadway that will connect to 178th, the, the area that's platted is right of way here at the bottom of the screen. You also have another access point that goes over to May. It's the first road up there with residential homes right, no, it's right here at the bottom, too. One of those will go in at the very first final plat, up to 100 homes.
Okay.
A second one will go in.
Yes.
The other one will go in from 100 and up to 200. And then from 200 on, the, what, because this plat is, is further south than what is constructed currently, which now I need to go up to the north part of the, can you scroll down? Or, I'm sorry. There's a part, see the, the dark area, that, that road's already built. And what we're saying is that the, the piece of the ring road from that point would be connected clear on down from 201 homes on up. So there'd be three really good access points at that point.
Yeah, that'd work.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Stewart.
I think I need to clarify because, Mike, you want to come up, Barry? Okay. When you're talking about completion of the ring road at 200 houses, you're talking about completion of the ring road to the west edge of where we're developing? Because this entire property that you see outlined with ring road, that's all commercial and probably 10 years away. So, I mean, we want to, we'll put in the access points, as Mr. Hoffner said, but to do the whole ring road wouldn't make sense in the commercial area until we develop that
Then I would suggest you provide something out the back of this plat to shoot out to the west and build a temporary street or whatever until you make up your mind. My thought was it would take you four or five years to get to your 200 home. By then, you should know what you're doing with the, the corner. I'm looking for that third access out to the west, to Portland or the State Highway 74, whatever you want to call it. That's, that's the big concern. We have, right now, potentially 400 homes in this plat with two ways in and out.
And I'm looking for circulation.
Yeah.
Through the section because that's how you've designed it. Yeah, and I, I think, I, I think we can get where you want to go. Let me tell you the problem with just agreeing to do the ring road all the way over and have some kind of access Portland. As you all know, ODOT moves at its own pace. I've been involved for, for at least two years on a condemnation case, and we still haven't tried it along Portland. When they're going to build it, I don't know. So we don't want to go build a ring road and provide access on something that ODOT hadn't completed in regard to the highway.
Well, as, as an alternative, I would offer that you build 200 homes here.
And stop.
And come, stop and come back with a revision to your preliminary plat or your final plat at that stage to tell us how you're going to address the access for the other 200 homes.
How about if we agree that we have to answer and resolve your access issues and the access issues that the chairman has at the final plat stage, which will give Steve and Barry Lodge an opportunity to come up with that alternative?
That's all right. That's fine.
Well, I think it's also important to know which 100 houses or which 100 lots you're going to develop first, and then the next 200 lots. You know that at this particular, you don't know that, but you'll know it at, at final plat.
Yeah, we'll know the final plat, and so we'll, and, and we understand your concerns, and we think they're valid, and we will come up with alternatives.
Hey, commissioners, any other discussion, questions?
Anyone to speak against this application?
Chairman? Against it?
Yeah. Protest?
No one has signed up, I'm sorry. No one's signed up.
Chairman, I'd move approval with the noting that the applicant has agreed with all the TEs except TE 4. And I'd modify TE 4, as we just discussed, that the ring road or some other access will be completed prior or at the final plat stage.
Okay.
And that the existing ring road, residential's can remain as a residential street.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item five as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item six is C 6211, a final plat of Pinpoint Office Park in Ward Eight.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates representing the applicant. This is a, a newer project of what has been built to the west of this. In the PUD, allowed for several uses in this particular tract. One of them was personal storage, but with the success of the residential style office, the developer has agreed, or has determined to parallel what he's already developed there. And so in order to do that, we would need a variance, as spelled out in TE number two, that would allow the private drive and parking area to serve as public access to the individual lots as they're sold. With regard to the rest of the TEs, we agree with all of them, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Staff tells me that we've amended the subdivision regulations since this was first put before us, and we'd no longer need a variance to TE 2.
Life gets just easier.
That's, that's our design. Our goal. No one has signed up, commissioners, questions or discussion?
No approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item seven is PV 070, an application by Esperanza Owners Association to vacate a portion of Esperanza Section 1, Common Area C, Ward Eight.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering, representing the applicant on this item. There are no TEs for me to agree with, so I would happily answer any questions you may have.
Okay, no one has signed up, commissioners?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you very much.
Item eight has been continued to May 27th. Item nine is C 6203, which is a final plat of Bentwood Creek, Section 2, in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, 1819 South Morgan Road. I'm on behalf of the applicant. We have, this was, this request was originally continued, and we met once before, the, once with the protesters prior to that continuance. And since then, we have met with the protesters a second time. We've worked with Commissioner Irwin, we've worked with the protesters, we've worked with the protesters' council on this. We, we believe that we've addressed the concerns of the protesters. We originally had two drainage outlets to the west, onto the larger tracks. We have since. We have since produced some calculations to show taking away one of those discharge points and have worked with the council on the, worked with the council and the protesters on the second discharge point, and believe we have reached an agreement on how to handle the drainage for this project. We agree to all the TEs and just ask for their approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, Buck, do you want to weigh in? You've obviously put quite a bit of time in on this with the applicant and the protesters to try and bring about a resolution here.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as Mark mentioned, they've met with the protesters. We've had a lot of dialogue, and, and I think that it's been a, a productive process. And in the end, I think that the developer has addressed the concerns in general that the protesters had. And it's my understanding that, that we're in agreement on the proposal that the developer has made regarding the development.
Mr. Groves, your clients are in agreement?
Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eric Groves. I represent three of the protesters, George White, Bernice White, John Baker. I just want to be sure that the understanding is clear on the record, if I might review it with the commission. And to do that, I'd like to hand out a drainage plan. May I do that?
Yes.
What you are receiving now is prepared by Mr. Grubbs, the engineer, who just spoke to you. It's a drainage area map, and it is oriented so that north is to the left side of the, of the map. All of you, I'm sure, received my letter brief on this. And just so that you'll know the nature of the resolution of this problem, one of my clients, John Baker, is located on the north side of these larger tracks. And the solution to his drainage problem is one that will probably have to be resolved by the city. So, it would require probably replacement of a tin horn under 59th, I guess, under 59th Street, and maybe some other changes. So that's not really before the commission at this point. In other words, the case has resolved itself to the point where we see what needs to be done, but it's going to require some work from the city. And if anything I say along these lines, Commissioner Irwin isn't correct, I know you'll say something. The problem with the runoff from the development to the west will be resolved as follows with respect to my client, the Whites. If the commission will direct its attention to the lower right-hand corner of the drainage map, you'll see a cul-de-sac. And if you look a little bit north of there, you'll see, print's kind of small, but it's a 14-foot curb opening. Water will drain off of that street, which is whispering Grove Drive, into a flume, which will stop at the end of the developer's property. And in order to mitigate against erosion, Mr. Grubbs has agreed to design that flume with a dissipator on the west side of it, so that the water will be spread out as it reaches my client's land, and that hopefully will mitigate against erosion. I assume that Public Works will be required to approve the design of that flume. Am I right, Mark? So, that is the, that is the nature of the resolution, the construction of that flume with a dissipator, probably a 20 or 22-foot dissipator. Is that right, Mark?
We're probably getting into more detail, and we need to know about the size of the dissipator, but just-
I know, there's a reason for all this, though. We do need to have it on the record, so. If there's any questions about the agreement we've reached, is this consistent with what you understand, Commissioner Irwin?
It is, it is.
And it's consistent with what you understand? Okay, that's the deal.
Good.
And with that, with that deal, we withdraw our objection to the plat.
Okay.
I have a question for the developer, Mark. Again, you know, we spent some time on developing some criteria for the garage fronts, and I see you doing the two trees or the three-inch. But have you, are you familiar with a document that was prepared to show some alternatives to garage fronts facing onto the streets? Are you familiar with that document?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you say that again?
We developed a document that gives some guidelines to how you can treat garage running onto the streets. And I'm, I'm asking you, are you familiar with that document?
The landscape document, the landscape requirement for the tree planting, is that what you're referring to?
Well, in the document, it's garage front designs for the-
The garden stuff?
Yes. And in there, it talks about the trees on, running on the street. And I'm just saying, are you familiar with that document? And did you take in consideration of some of those alternatives for the garages facing onto the street?
We haven't, I have not looked into that detail with the actual, the developer, who will build some of the lots himself. I have not went into detail with that. He would, he just assured me that he was in agreement with the TE that required those plantings in the, in those cases.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on developing that, and it's not going to be, you know, we were really encouraged that you look at that, because we were really serious about, you know, doing something about the garage facing on the street. And it's not always just around the, you know, garages on the side. So we'd like to encourage you to do it. I'm kind of disappointed here that you say you haven't even, you know, you haven't seen it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just like to make a note on TE number 1 that says that, says the NOI must be submitted prior to the commission approval of the final plat. We have submitted that to the city.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, and I'd, I'd like to commend Mr. Grubbs, Eric, Commissioner Irwin, in putting this together. It's what we would like to see when there's significant protests coming from the neighbors that have significant concerns. And your cooperative attitude and counsel and what you did, Commissioner Irwin, is what we'd really like to see happen with most of the projects that come in with those kind of protests. And I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Grubbs, while you're here, is the same developer responsible for the Bentwood property to the east that's been built? Is that?
Yes. That was, that was originally a partnership that has since just transferred to Mr. Jaster's ownership. He is responsible for the existing first phase at this time?
Well, I was out there yesterday, not knowing that a settlement was imminent, so I went out and was on the ground. I wanted to be familiar with it, because we've had so much discussion about it. And since the subject of trees has come up, that's probably the worst example of trees I've seen. In a lot of those lots, there's one tree. It's this big around, diameter's not even an inch probably, and they're dead. That needs to be fixed.
Okay.
There's supposed to be two trees, for one thing, and there's, and they're supposed to be sufficient to survive.
Okay. I will make sure that he is aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
This brings up a question that we talked about this morning, enforcement and review of developments. You know, if they just want to put one big tree or two trees in front of a garage, who looks at that and, just like, well, the chairman looked at it and has announced that it's not right, that, that there should be a review of these things that we approved, and somebody says, "Didn't do that." It's-
Agreed. It's a problem. No one has signed up, commissioners, any other discussion? We've got an agreement among the parties here, and I think we ought to celebrate that fact. I'll move approval. Second. As with the agreement included as part of the, the approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 9. Cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you.
Item 10 is PUD 1412, which is an application by Johnny Ray to rezone 4401 South St. Clair Avenue from I-1 Single Family, I-2 Medium Dens, Low Density Residential, C-3 and AE-2 Airport Environments to the PUD 1412 District, Ward 3.
Right, I missed it.
Warren Peacock with WPM Design Group, representing the applicant. This is a one-and-a-half-acre tract that we've filed at the PUD in to do some boat storage and RV storage on the back with some office warehouse in the front. There's three different zoning districts, as you can see, in this area. We've worked with the staff and agree and have tried to comply with all of their requirements. We do agree with the staff technical comments, so unless there's questions, we would just request approval.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
Warren, you say you agree with the TEs?
Yes.
TE 1 is rather lengthy. And it's a either-or. What are you agreeing to on TE 1?
The first part. We're going to do the 70% brick veneer or 30, and that, we're not going to worry about the other part of it. He's going to cover the exterior of all the buildings in this area with the minimum of 70% brick veneer and 30%-
Okay, now, my, my next question is, what about other appearance things? Buffering and landscaping, and what I'm, I'm a little hypersensitive to is you're coming down the interstate south, you look over there and you, you look, have a bird's-eye view of this property. And then if you curve around to the airport, you, you get some more exposure.
Right, right.
Obviously, we talk about appearance corridors. This is one that everyone literally going to the airport off the interstate, going to have a bird's-eye view of. These are not the most beautiful structures to begin with. So, what can you do to, to address that?
Well, we obviously are going to have a six-to-eight-foot site-proof fence around the perimeter, which isn't going to help much from the interstate because of the elevation differences. We also are going to have trees landscaping around the perimeter outside the fence on the north. We can also provide that on the east with trees that will actually eventually get big enough to conceal and screen part of that. We will, as said, we're going to make the buildings the brick so that they won't look like, they're not going to be metal building structures sitting out there. They, the build, the actual RV storage itself were probably somewhere around 16, 17 feet in height. That's typically the height of those. So, we can do some things like that. There's not much we can do about the elevation difference, obviously, from the interstate looking down into that area. Although, that area right now's got three or two, they're basically tilt-up buildings, tilt-up concrete panel buildings. There's an auto mechanic shop, and then there's a warehouse that's just west of there. So I think we'll be providing something that'll be a lot more attractive than that. And we, as I said, we can plan to spruce it up with some additional landscaping if need be, and, and those kinds of things. Now, the fence itself, we're planning on, is going to be a wood fence with brick columns, so it'll be more like a residential perimeter fence on a, on a section-lined road. So we're, we're trying to do those things to, to make it look better.
On that issue, on the trees, under your PUD 9.4, you said landscaping on the north boundary shall consist of six two-inch caliper trees, 50 foot on center. And on your, your, your site plan here, I counted the dots, and I assume the dots may be either the, is that either the concrete or the trees, I don't know, but I think 50-foot centers, it would be much better, I think, if you doubled that and put instead of six two-inch trees, 12 two-inch trees on 25-foot centers.
I don't think that'd be a problem.
Mainly because of what Commissioner, it is a, it's, this, this will be seen by diplomats, anybody.
And I think we can also agree to put that down the east boundary also, which would screen a lot of that from the highway eventually.
Right, but just double up on, on what you're doing on the, on the centers.
We, we also, in the revised site plan, we did, we're able to eliminate some of the parking spaces, so we did shift the building a little bit further to, the, the front building, a little bit further to the south. But we've allowed ourselves more green space in the front, which abuts 44th Street, so there'll be additional landscaping that we'll be able to do there also to screen a lot of that from 44th Street.
We'll be looking at it. We'll be looking at it to and from the airport, won't we? So there won't be any inspection problems.
Any other discussion, commissioners?
I move approval of the application with the additional doubling up of the tree, the tree requirements.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 10 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
We need to revisit item 9 again. There was a variance that I overlooked in my excitement at the settlement between the parties on drainage. TE 5 requires a variance as to block length.
Move approval of the variance.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE 5 and item 9. Cast your votes. Thank you. Now we're caught up.
Item 11 is PV 069, which is an application by Kirkpatrick Bank to vacate the final plat of Kings Point at New Westbury East. This was previously approved by the city council, but wasn't filed with Canadian County. So it needs to be vacated, Ward 3.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Dwight Butler of Anchor Engineering. In this particular case, I represent the contact person, since Kirkpatrick Bank no longer owns it. Mr. Scribner did, in fact, purchase it.
Hey, we're vacating in item 11 and doing a final plat in item 12 of the same site. No one's signed up. Move approval. A second, we have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes. That's approved. And not to be overlooked, there are three variances with respect to item 12, so.
We're on item 12.
And once again, Mr. Chairman, Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering, representing the applicant on this particular item. I have looked over the TEs. I do have one minor point of interest in that I have not yet submitted the notice of intent. I'm waiting for the engineering to get my check prints back to make sure that I have the storm sewer designed adequately before I finish filling out all of the notice of intent and NOIs WP3 and such. But other than that, we are good.
Right, we just vacated a plat, now we're coming back with this one. And just broad, general terms, can you tell us the difference between these two plats?
One was done by Mr. Peacock, and one was done by myself. It was, they're basically one and the same. I have done some minor adjustments on it. The water and sewer were constructed and accepted by the city. They are in place. So I went in and made sure that, and partial, part of the storm sewer is actually constructed, all of the underground structures. The only part remaining is the perimetered flume, which runs along the north side and halfway down the east. And when they constructed the sanitary sewer, it wasn't exactly where it needed to be horizontal-wise, so I had to make some adjustments to get everything to fit. But I'm pretty confident engineering is going to work with us on it. They already have, as a matter of fact, and I, I believe we're good to go to get this back on track and finished up.
Thank you.
James, go ahead.
I move variance on number, number two, item number two, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance on TE 2. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
I move the approval of the variance on TE number three, second.
Motion and second to approve the variance on TE 3. Cast your votes.
And I move the application, second.
Motion and second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 13 is SPUD 547, an application by Rockwell RV Park to rezone property east of South Rockwell Avenue and south of I-40 from I-1 Single Family and Scenic River Overlay District to SPUD 547 in Ward 3.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box. This is an application. I'd like to hand out some pictures, show you what's proposed. But my client, David Miller, owns the existing RV park that sits just to the north. And he has a- owns the existing RV park that sits just to the north, and he has a lease that willing show the subject property. And what we have planned, we have utilities exist, and we'd like to just expand that. We have coordinated with several of you all on the commission. We have coordinated with members of the city staff to make sure they were okay with this in regard to any matters regarding the river. Pat Downs has indicated to us he has no objection, knowing that this will probably be a temporary use. Let me hand out these pictures and then I want to answer any questions you have. When, when you drive out to this site, and what the pictures are going to show you is a number of uses that ultimately, I think, will be made better, hopefully. We've got a trailer park that exists in close proximity, and I hope that it either goes away or it improves. But there's also, we've got Mount Trashmore down here, we've got a hotel that exists across the street, we have the existing RV park, which David is the owner of, and utilities exist here. So we had an opportunity, we attempted to purchase the property, we're not able to, but have leased it, so we have permission to expand those utilities, and we'd have an additional 63 spaces. Now, if you go out to the site today, you're going to see where the buffalo roam, and you're going to see some teepees. And David thinks that this will be a nice destination spot for people that are on the road, and so he's already put those in. With regard to the TEs, the handout that I gave you, we can agree with all the technical evaluations, except for on the hard surface paving. David, at the present time, just to the north, has a parking area that, this is what it consists of, and we'd like to mirror that. It's six inches of compacted dirt with felt or fiber over it, and then he's got six inches of crush run, large rock and small rocks mixed together and compacted. It's worked very well. You're seeing some of these come downtown in different parts of the city. We think that would be a better use than trying to put concrete in. Keeping in mind that if you try to put concrete in, you run into some floodplain issues in regard to where you'd have to build up your pad. So we'd like to make that our requirement in regard to the underlying surface. We will have a drive that goes into it that's four inches of concrete, 22 feet wide. So we're here to answer any questions, and this is an expansion of existing use, and as you can tell, we're comfortable with excluding a number of uses. Mr. Irwin, we want to appreciate your meeting with us in regard to concerns that you had and the other Commissioners that we've talked to, so.
Dennis, would automotive and equipment sales and rentals be restricted to RVs?
Yes. As an accessory use, I think that would be fine. I think we need to make that clear and make that.
That's why I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't sure it was clear.
Yeah.
And my question is, is a five-story hotel accessory to an RV park?
No, but one of the things we found out when we talked to Mr. Downs was that the future uses that are planned for this corridor, and if you recall, I've done a commercial piece of property back to the east, I've done Ford Audio, and now we're here trying to expand this use. We were told that hotels that were close to Crystal Lake and/or close to the river would be the kind of use that the city would want to see long-term, so that's why we put it in there.
The Oklahoma City Plan identifies, you know, what you, I mean, what's adjacent to or on environmental conservation areas, and uses are limited within the environmental conservation designation to protect vulnerable natural resources. Recreation and grazing are listed as appropriate uses. And I don't see there's anything in that definition under the Oklahoma City Plan that a five-story hotel is appropriate in an environmental conservation designated area. How do you overcome the Oklahoma City Plan, or you don't?
I mean, I, I'm just telling you that from our standpoint, we put that in as a use that we were told the city might want to put in in the future. From a practical standpoint, if that causes this commission major heartburn, then, I mean, we can take it out. But anytime you deal with an RV park, it's kind of an interim use, and so ultimately, at some point, there'll be permanent uses will be put into place, and so we were reacting to what we were told.
Dennis, does your client own the property to the east and to the south?
No, my client, the property owner to the east and to the south, at the line you see on the map above you, that is the owner that has leased us what's shown as subject. So we tried to buy it, but they wouldn't sell it to us, so we were able to lease what's.
Do you know about what the width of the property there that runs the length of the south half, or the south part of the subject property?
I bet my client could tell you.
Introduce yourself.
I'm David Miller. Sorry, your question?
The width of the property that runs adjacent to the south side of your property?
The, well, we have 10 acres leased, and approximately what they show in the subject area is five acres. And it's approximately 1,100 foot from the north side of Rockwell all the way to the back east side. But the property owner that owns all of that owns the subject property and the property we're leasing. It's a total of a 30-acre, 38-acre track.
That would probably be the only access to the property to the east, right?
No, sir. There's a service road that runs.
Will the service road access that?
There's a service road that runs around to the north by the park on the west side, and that goes into that 38 acres. There's also access in off of MacArthur that comes in.
Okay. Thank you.
No one has signed up.
It all started, I agree with the staff. I move to deny the application. Pardon me.
He made a motion to deny. I don't hear a second. All right, is there any further discussion? If you vote yes, you're voting for denial of item 13. Cast your votes, and that motion fails. Now, Janice is, yeah, she's not here. Okay. So 6 to 2, the motion to deny fails.
Could I make just a point, just to point something out to Dennis? Dennis, just looking at your pictures here, and I pointed this out to Susan, I just would like to make a recommendation, should this pass, that you not include the picture that shows News Channel 4, News Channel 9, and the police with their lights on in your publications. That's not the best advertising, but that shows what we're dealing with, and we're trying to improve an area that, if you look at the trailer park that those police officers were at.
Right.
It's scary, so, point well taken, but, you know, full closure.
I would definitely say the quality of the operation that Rockwell RV Park is running compared to the quality of the development south or south of him is drastically different.
So we can get a vote, a second?
And he's probably the only property owner who's been willing to improve property, not his, along the river.
Right. I just have one comment. I think the west side, the mobile home park, or the RV park on the west side, isn't that the one that flooded out about 8 or 10 years ago?
Well, our park flooded back in the, we didn't take over until 92, and it flooded prior to that because they'd gone bankrupt. But the city went in and redid the channel that drains that whole area. There's a bridge at Rockwell just north of us, and the city did that all the way to the river, and it's never flooded since then.
Okay.
And we've had substantial rains.
I heard Dennis.
We haven't flooded since then.
I heard Dennis say you're going to build your pads up.
No, it will not. FEMA does not require that. That's the only thing that can be done in there that's not required to build it up.
We met with city officials, and they indicated we would not have to build up it yet.
Now, the motion and a second resumes the use changes that we've discussed with Mr. Box and which have been agreed to. We also do not need TE 4. I understand, which relates to the site proof screening. Ready to vote? Motion to approve item 13. Cast your votes. Same vote reversed, 6 to 2, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 14 has been continued until May 13th. Item 15 is DA 22973, an application by Swiden &amp; Sons to obtain a lot split on property located at 11,700 South Western Avenue in Ward 5.
You'll keep that as an attachment to the. Okay, Joe, we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Joe Covey on behalf of Swiden &amp; Sons. I'm with Smith Roberts Valves Water Engineering Company. Just a little bit of history, you have it in your staff report to kind of reiterate, this application came to you about three years ago in the form of a final plat, a simple final plat, to plat seven lots at 116th and South Western. My client owns to the center line of the existing street. We had worked with the church. We had to continue our application indefinitely because the church was having second thoughts about being a part of the application. We have been working since that time to get the church happy to come along with us, and they have finally just told us they really don't want to be a part of the plating application. We have two deed approvals for the two tracks that front out, existing deed approvals for the two tracks that front on 116th at the corner of Western. We are requesting deed approvals for the three remaining, four remaining tracks. I have an exhibit, the church used to own this piece of property. They did the public street easement and developed that public street. They sold this piece of property to another nonprofit entity. They in turn sold it to the Swiden Investment Group, and they have built this out. The church in Swiden went in later and did an easement, an access easement back to here so that they'd have a street, and they put the street in. We are now requesting deed approval for this track, which is, fronts onto Western, has access to sewer and water. In fact, all of them have sewer and water access, they have street access by paving. We have met with the fire department. We don't have room on our property for a cul-de-sac. We met with the fire department. Fire chief says, put us a turnaround in this area here. We're willing to do that. We've got that drafted. The reason for the application, Mr. Swiden and Swiden Investment Group, these people that are presently leasing these buildings have showed interest, have asked about buying the property. They're wanting to buy their own piece of property. This is not a new situation. I have personally platted three other, that I know of, three other industrial developments where the buildings are already built. They only want to come in and plats the property after the fact. They've done it, we've done it by private access easements. Your first TE in your staff report is that we more or less tear out this street and rebuild it to public street standards even though it's a private access street. We feel like personally that's a waste of money, but that's what the engineering staff is requesting. We're asking for nothing more than what we've done in the past, only it's not under the issue of a plat, it's under deed approval, which is a plating process, and asking that we be able to have deed approvals for these tracks to be able to sell them off. With that, I'm ready to answer any questions.
What did you say about the street? Are you going to repave the street to the city standards?
No, sir. We'd rather not, no.
You'd rather not do that?
It's, we're looking, and it's strictly monetary, but the street's in place. These buildings are all existing. They have been there for some, well, the last one was probably built six or seven years ago, but for the most part, this development started about 19, 20 years ago. And it's a dead-end street. Now, that's a heartburn with the engineering department. I'm not trying to plead their case for them, but if you look at the aerial, there is a pond right here. The church property wraps around us. Any development they do, they already have access to Western Avenue.
But the turnaround there, you're talking about building down there at the end of that?
It's already.
That's going to be hard surface to the standards of the fire department?
It's already hard surface. It's a part of the existing parking lot and access around this building.
I thought, I thought I understood you to say that fire wanted, wanted more, that you were going to do it.
They wanted us to provide a written document.
Oh, okay.
Where they had the right to use that piece of property. You and I both know, Commissioner, that fire department's going to turn around where they want to turn around anyhow. They want a.
Well, I understand, but the issue becomes, if they turn around and it's substandard, and they bog their big heavy trucks down, the landowner comes back, says the city damaged their property, they want it built back, and that's what they're trying to get around.
Then that's what we're going to do.
Very good, thank you.
So just to clarify, so the shaded, the dark shaded portion of your diagram, there's a point that starts this little diagonal hash lines, so that portion is not paved now with any type of hard surface.
It is paved all the way to the end. It's just that it's not paved to, paved to public street standards.
Okay.
Okay?
The parking lot, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little bit thicker than parking lots, but it's not six or eight inches thick.
But these are parking.
It's presumably been subject to that kind of traffic for the last minimum seven years, for the last building, so.
And that remains private, obviously.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? No one signed up?
No approval.
Well, we have three variants.
Wait, wait, wait. Three variants?
Two, three, four.
Move approval of the variance in TE number two.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE 2. Cast your votes.
Move approval of the variance in TE number three.
A motion and second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes.
Move approval of the variance in TE number four.
Second. Motion and second to approve the variance TE 4. Cast your votes.
Move approval of the application.
Keep.
With deleting one.
Thank you.
Deleting TE 1, right?
Thank you, yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay, motion and second to approve item, I've forgotten the number, 15, minus TE number one. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you so much.
Item 16 is SPUD 555, an application by PBOD M. 3rd to rezone 849 Southwest 104th Street from C-3 Community Commercial on SPUD 402 to SPUD 555 in Ward 5.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name is PBOD M. 3rd, I'm with the
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is P B Odom III, I'm the developer, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Paul, can we do away with gasoline sales large?
I believe, yeah. J.J., we talked about that earlier, that is, that's a Love's, I guess, a big truck stop.
Oh, it's a truck stop, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need a truck stop, no.
I didn't think so.
No, I'm going to put a truck stop there. No, there's no problem with that. This actually was all zones C at one time, and through an oversight, it changed to everything only outdoor garden sales. It was supposed to be C plus outdoor garden sales, and it got changed to only outdoor garden sales. So now we're coming back and ready to start a building and have garden sales as well as a couple of other things.
Okay.
Yeah.
No one signed up? Commissioners, discussion? Questions of Mr. Odom?
Regardless of not having a staff report in my packet, I will move approval of this Pollution of gasoline sales large.
Yeah, we'll take it, yeah.
And we have a second? Okay, a motion in the second to approve item 16 minus gasoline sales large. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 17 has been continued until May 13th. Item 18 is S P 420, an application by West Town Resource Center for special permit to operate a day shelter with kitchen in the I-1 Light Industrial District at 1729 Northwest Third Street in Ward 6.
Paul, a fever for the applicant, and with me today is Dan Strong, Executive Director of the Homeless Alliance. What we're asking for is a special exception permit to allow a kitchen and dining facility to be included within the day shelter that's to be constructed later this summer as part of the Homeless Alliance campus here between Third and Fourth Street and Virginia and Kentucky. And that is what's, the kitchen facility is what's necessitating the permit. Have you tried to answer any questions you might have?
Paul, my understanding is that the request is contained to the building within which the kitchen will be constructed, is that correct?
On passing out is a letter that I gave earlier to Mr. Chambliss. It requests that the effectiveness of the permit be limited to lots seven through 17, Block 3 of Carl &amp; Carl Cord Edition. That is the lots where the footprint of the building will be located upon there. It's roughly the building that you see there with I-1 on it, that actually will be demolished. The, here is the same block that you're seeing, and this is the day shelter that we're discussing. The access will be through the interior of the campus. There are some site proof fencing just south and on the northwest corner for smoking and non-smoking exterior issues. This is helpful at all. This is the foreplate of the structure with a kitchen, dining room. There'll be closets, restrooms, barbershop, and a certain amount of office.
Does this legal description of the handout you just handed us, does it, go to the first graphic on the day shelter, does that cover that building right there?
There.
That's what, okay, that's what I needed to know.
The building in the parking apron to it, basically?
Seventeen goes all the way to there.
Okay. All right, there is someone signed up. Any questions of either Dan or Paul before we, okay? Bill Prugert, if I, hope I pronounced your name correctly? If you'd give us your name and address, please.
I'm Bill Prugert. I own a business at the corner of Kentucky and Southwest Second. I own a home across the street, several lots there. When they first put this shelter in, it wasn't really a shelter, it was supposed to be a place that he was going to, Mr. Strong was going to bus in these people, train them, and bus them out. He said, they won't be coming through the neighborhood. And I might as well call him, but I just hope his pants don't catch on fire. But I don't see any buses. If the buses are there, he must keep them hid because he doesn't get them out. And they're giving some kind of sack lunches or something on Saturday, and I grew up on a farm, and it reminds me of opening a cattle gate, and all the cattle going out, you know, down through the area, these people, just flood that area headed over there to this shelter. And when this was put in, it was presented as being a training place, and they would bus them in, train them, and bus them back where they came from. Well, that is not the way it's working out. It's kind of like the federal government, once they get a program, and they just keep adding more, you know, getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And that's about all I can say. If you have any questions for me.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Prugert? Thank you. Dan, can you just give us a quick synopsis of exactly how you are operating there?
I'm passing out a site plan for the block that the Homeless Alliance owns most of that block, and our intention is to build a campus for homeless services. This, the Resource Center is already under construction, and it will have job training and placement services there offered by teen, the Education and Employment Ministries, as well as healthcare and mental health counseling, other needed services for the homeless. The Resource Center will concentrate on homeless families with children, although it won't exclude other subpopulations of our homeless community. The day shelter, which is the subject of today's discussion, is intended for, well, it's a safe, warm, dry place to be. We do have programming space in the day shelter, classroom space, arts space, but it is, the day shelter is primarily intended to be a place for homeless people to be during the day. Oklahoma City has not had a day shelter since REST was closed in 1997. Lacking a day shelter is one of the reasons why the community is perceived to have a larger homeless population than it does. If you want homeless off the street, you have to give them a good place to go. And since we as a community don't have that currently, then, as I'm sure most of you know, the NORC library has become our de facto day shelter. So if you can offer services and programming in a pleasant place, you can keep those folks on site. We're not currently, I mean, these are under construction, the Resource Center is under construction, the day shelter is an empty warehouse. The church may allow a congregation, those do a church feeding there every other Saturday, and I'm sure that's the issue Mr. Prugert was addressing. We have worked with Metro Transit to bring bus line number nine up to this cutout for the campus, and in addition, of course, Healing Hands Healthcare for the homeless operates the HNet bus, which is free transportation services for our homeless population. Once the Resource Center is open, the HNet bus will be stopping at that cutout. But until, until the structures are built and we're actually offering services there, there's no point in bringing buses there.
When you have the day shelter operating, how many meals a day? One, two, or three? What would you be serving?
Two. Breakfast and lunch. City Care, which currently has, is offering a breakfast, used to be at City Church, but is at the First Methodist now, will move that breakfast to the day shelter and offer it there, and then we'll, we'll offer lunch. Dan, I know full well what you're doing and have been involved in meetings on that, and was also involved in the organization and operation of REST when it started and when it ended, and knowing full well that the need for a facility like this during the day is absolutely crucial. Issue is not in my backyard. I mean, that's, you know, where do you put, where are these things supposed to be put? I've been in your buildings and understand that you're not yet operational, you know, you're getting funds together to build and construct and all that sort of thing. But still, this not in my backyard was the primary reason why the city of Oklahoma City cut off the funding of REST because of the objections of the residents around Washington Center School, that they didn't like the population going across their yard. We didn't know how to fix it because, you know, they're mobile, but to the extent that you can have a best transportation for your, your other building, I don't know what you intend to do about getting people in for breakfast and lunch, they'll come. They'll, they'll just be there. But as far as, you know, having some sort of consciousness of neighbors, and I'm sure that you do, of protection and cleanliness and all those things that, that are an issue with a day shelter, as long as, and I know that your organization is conscious of that and, and all that, I fully, fully support your application and would, I mean, if you want to have further discussion, move approval.
Just, I just, I appreciate Bob's comments and et cetera, but I haven't heard how that you intend to address the protesters' concerns. I heard you say that, but I, what's your plan? You got one? I mean, I understand his concern, I understand your plight, Bob rightly addressed it, but I mean, these are valid concerns with respect to, it was a concern that was expressed with the Public Inebriate Center at Sixton-Linwood. Any DRI, I've talked to those persons about the transient population, and maybe there's not an answer, but I'd at least like to hear how you hope to address the concerns that were raised by the protester, if you can.
I certainly agree with, with our neighbors that it's extraordinarily challenging, and it's a challenging population to work with. We have attempted to design the campus to focus the population on the interior of the campus rather than on the outskirts where our neighbors are. We have been in discussion with Metro Transit to bring bus line number nine up Virginia to our cutout. We've already agreed with Healing Hands to bring the HNet Express Bus to, to our cutout. So, that helps with the, this issue of transients walking through the neighborhood. It can't be prevented. Being homeless is not a crime.
I understand.
And so, cannot force them to be on the campus, but our, our desire and intent is to design the campus in such a way that it would be attractive enough to keep the population on board. It's one of the reasons why I have to design a day shelter with a kitchen, because if I don't feed them, they will certainly go out through the neighborhood.
And what are your hours of operation with respect to this particular, it might be in my staff report, but if you could help me on that. You serve breakfast and lunch, and then this particular, is close downs after lunch, two o'clock?
Close, probably at five. Opening, we're still working with City Church on when we need to do that. Seven o'clock, probably.
Okay.
One factor, Dan, that, I mean, I know we have a motion in the second, but that I think still is, is a condition of the homeless, is that shelters, you're not going to, these aren't going to be sleeping quarters for the homeless. Unless there's a weather emergency and you can put up cots and that sort of thing, I assume. But one significant factor about day shelters is that those organizations, Salvation Army and others, that do house homeless for the night, isn't it still true that somewhere around six o'clock in the morning, they're let out and the doors are shut and they have no place to go? That's exactly right. And that's really where the benefit of a day shelter comes in and why it's really crucially needed just to protect people during that day where they have no place. And so that's why I still moved and seconded.
Will the Resource Center be 24-hour operation, Dan?
The Resource Center will definitely not. It's essentially an office complex with, that co-locates programs of multiple agencies, government, faith-based, and nonprofit. And it'll, it'll be a business hour operation. Now, I suspect that for some, training, employment training, tenants' rights, those sorts of things that will do evening things, because the population that the Resource geared, is Resource Center is geared toward, they're kind of working for, it's, sometimes it's hard for them to make appointments during business hours.
Right. Any other discussion?
But I did want to reiterate what Commissioner Bright said. This is not intended to be an overnight facility except in disasters.
Right. We have a motion in the second, Commissioners. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? Cast your votes, and item 18 is approved.
Item 19 is S P U D 557, an application by R.S. Cowles to rezone 52 I-1 Richardson Avenue from I-1 Single Family to S P U D 557 in Ward 7.
I'm Robert Cowles, and I've been the owner and operator of Hillcraft Memory Garden Cemetery for 40, 45 years, and I've got such an acute hearing problem that I can't really present this or argue, and my grandson, Matthew Richardson, will speak for me.
That'd be fine.
I'm Matt Richardson, 3021 K-Lane. Basically just wanted to get a storage building put up on this property. Zone is an R-1. He's owned it for 30, 35 years now, and it's just sat vacant. It's a, a stored vaults on it. Basically trying to get a storage building put up over there. The one that they have now existing is dilapidated and in pretty bad shape, so.
Now, have you read our staff report?
Yes.
And particularly Roman numeral four, staff recommendations and summary of technical evaluation?
Which one is that for?
That would actually be on page five of your staff report. There are seven items.
Right.
And those are our staff recommendations to us, and I want to make sure that you're aware of them all, particularly item five.
Okay. Yeah?
You in agreement with them?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, so I'm asking if you're in agreement with the technical evaluations?
Want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, I want to be clear.
That's a condition of, of the application, so that your grandfather understands that we're asking him to build a non-metal building versus a metal building.
Well, building's already in place. I have, it's a building bought from Carolina Carports. It was a 24 by 36 building. I think he spent about five, about $5,500 on it. They came out, slapped it in, you know, in a day. It's there.
You mean, you're asking us for forgiveness rather than permission?
No, I mean, it's, you know, they came out, slapped it in, and in and out in a day, so.
When was it built?
About two months ago.
That's my point.
What is it?
Forgiveness rather than permission.
Yeah.
And what is it? What is the building?
What sort of?
It's a sheet metal building, it's just like a. It's just like a...
Yeah, what's that called for that?
You could add a veneer to it so that you, so it doesn't look like a metal building. That's what we want to avoid.
Okay. I mean, whatever it takes. We're planning on putting up a fence around it to kind of conceal it. I mean, it's, you know, not a bad-looking building at all, but it is, it is metal.
Wow. How far off the street is it?
Excuse me?
How far are you, how far are you located back off of a public street with the building?
Well, it's right at the corner of Richardson and 50th. I mean, it's probably off of 50th, probably 100, 100 yards.
About 30 feet?
It's probably about, I think it's 500 feet from 50th. It's kind of, I hate to say it, but no man's land out there. I mean, you know, he gets no, no support really from the fire department or the police department. He gets broken into all the time. The one that he owns now, the door's been kicked in so many times, it really can't do anything.
Sir, look, tell us, looking at this area, tell us what's around here.
There's a bunch of houses that are vacant, empty.
You know, what are we protecting here? I understand the generic request for 70% brick and whatnot, but come on, folks.
In this neck of the woods.
Let's use some discretion and common sense here.
Is this at the corner of, what's the nearest dark big street?
Uh, the...
50th?
50th?
Yeah, 50th and High Wassy.
This is 50th and High Wassy?
Yeah.
Actually, you're at 52nd.
Well, between 50th and 52nd.
And High Wassy. So you don't front onto 50th, right?
No, no.
No. Wait. And there was a building, or there was a building before there?
No, not on this particular...
There wasn't, Bob, in this property.
It's a vault store.
Okay.
That's the old, the old office. Now, with the, not the office. It's a Swiss store, equipment and motors. We do, I think it's stolen. Yeah, he's on that, he's on that piece of property. Whoever pays taxes on that.
These are little houses.
Oh, we've stopped selling.
But it's still, this is...
Do you own any of the property back to the west and south?
Um, no. No, he owns the cemetery right there and this piece of property here.
Just this property right here?
Yeah.
On that side of the street?
Um, you know, the cemetery right up there and that piece of property right over there to the left, which is all I want. Right now, you know, the storage building now is, you know, like I said, I mean, there's even a wall that's been kicked in. It's in bad shape. You know, what we'd like to do is move that over to the proposed site, level, all the, you know, all the stuff that's up there now, which, you know, doesn't look good at all.
How big is the storage building?
24 by 36.
24 by what?
24 by 36 feet.
I've been, you know, I've been out to the cemetery a number of times on different occasions, you know, and the whole area out there really is kind of residential real. It's kind of rural area. And, and this real is an improvement. I don't like to waver from our, our design standards as far as the brick, but I think in this case, it lends itself for, it's appropriate for where it is even though it may not adhere to our standards. Richardson is a small street. It's really kind of a improvement, the building in and of itself, so I don't have any objection to this particular application and this particular facility. So I move approval if there's no...
No one signed up?
No, no one's signing up.
Prove deleting TE5.
Deleting the TE5.
Deleting TE5.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item 19, deleting TE5. Cast your votes. And take Commissioner Bright and Commissioner Allen off the screen there.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I guess Bright's going to come back, but Allen's gone.
Item 20 is PC 10249, which is an application by John and Janice Brightwell to rezonate 9201 North Kelly from I-1 Single Family to O2 General Office in Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Bill Collins, here in behalf, here in behalf of Mr. and Mrs. John Brightwell. This is roughly the corner of Britton Road and Kelly. It's a rapidly developing area, a lot of offices, and we're planning something that's consistent with what's been going in. And for clarification, the lot on the corner immediately north is on C3. It's shown as being vacant right now, or shown as no zoning, but that's C3 zoning. Southwest corner of Britton Road and Kelly. And not shown also, to the immediate south of this property, is a long driveway that extends the length of this property into People's Church.
And then this bit down below here, Dan, in here, Bill, is that down into the KOCO area down there, the bit down, is that south down that way?
Drive, drive there, Jason.
Okay. All right.
Bill, you're asking for straight O2. Was there any consideration to putting this into a S.P.U.D.?
Well, we thought about it and tell you the truth, Mr. Gales, I did ask the staff about it. And the consensus with my talking with staff, Mr. Campbell in particular, there are so many constraints built into the O2 office, really not that much would be gained by adding any additional to this. And there's a lot of O2 zoning in the area, and that was the reason for it. And my clients are operating on a limited budget and rather than go to the expense, well, not that much would be gained, just didn't make much sense.
Thank you.
I have, this is the question that's related to Mr. Gales' comment about, I had the same note on my, when I was reviewing this, why not an S.P.U.D.? Under O2, JJ, is there a restriction on the type of materials that you use for a building? Can you put a metal building on this property?
No, no. No metal buildings.
Okay. And you'd have to comply with the landscaping code as it is? Then...
Any other second? Okay. Motion in second to approve item 20. Cast your votes and you approve.
Item 21 is, is the PUD SP dash 1405, an application by Turner Company for a specific, a specific plan at 9725 North Lincoln Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ernie Ish representing the applicant. This is a specific plan for the DLO Medical Laboratory that we presented to you back in November and the council approved in February. We have a, a slide to show you the colors. I also have eight and a half by elevens showing the colors of the buildings. If you'd like me to pass those...
Please do. Show it, hold it.
We are at the 90% of plan completion on this project and expect to be applying for our building permit very shortly. And so we'd like to get your approval of our specific plan. In addition to the colored rendering there, we've, we have submitted and you have seen the specific plan, which is almost identical to the conceptual plan that we showed you when the PUD was approved. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Well, you provided, the only thing you omitted when you first turned in your specific plan, which was the colors and the materials.
We had some debate with the owner about what those colors should be.
Mr. Chairman, I note the staff has checked the plans, found them to be complete. Colors on the rendering are obviously attractive. I move approval.
Second. We have a motion in second to approve item 21. Cast your votes and you approve. Thank you, Ernie.
Item 22 is an ordinance for public hearing relating to outdoor storage and display of tires.
And we have, we need a motion to introduce and set for hearing. Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second to set item 22. Cast your votes and that's approved.
Item 23 is to introduce and set for public hearing on May 27th. An ordinance amending Chapter 59 pertaining to the Bricktown Core District Use Regulations, deleting use units for eating establishments drive-in and eating establishments fast food with drive-through windows.
Is that previously?
I move that we set for public hearing.
We have a motion in second to set public hearing item 23. Cast your votes. Jay, Russell, was I wrong on 22? Was that to approve the ordinance rather than set it?
It wasn't.
Okay. 22, we...
We're supposed to approve it.
It should have been to approve the ordinance, not set it, and I said set, so...
The motion was to approve.
Yeah, you said it wrong.
I said it wrong. Okay. As long as, as long as Nick was right, we're in good shape. All right. Sorry about that. Very good. Item 23, 24, we're going to continue...
24 and 25, we're going to continue those.
So we're moved to continue 24 and 25 to...
One month, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what Susan said.
Uh, one month? Two, are we going to move it on the 27?
It'll be 27, 27.
But our second meeting in May?
Yeah, 27.
Okay. So moved.
Okay. We have a motion in second to continue both items 24 and 25 to our second May meeting. Cast your votes. And that is approved. Now, Planning Commission committees, first question is, are we getting this garage front policy outlined in the hands of applicants and helpers as they come to...
I'm not sure. I think we're going to have to attempt some wider distribution would be my suggestion on that. And I don't, I don't know how we implement that, but I think, I think it needs a little broader broadcast.
Is it possible?
I'm happy to do a...
And I know this would be a hassle, staff, but is it possible when people come in to, to apply or file a preliminary, to give them the guidelines, about just...
It's part of our application packet.
Every time, it's in the application packet.
It's on our website.
It is on the website? That was my question.
Well, then, then we're out of excuses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if we need to rethink, you know, sort of how that is presented to our applicants, you know, that it's, when they come here and say, well, we're going to comply, that doesn't really tell us anything because they're not requirements, they're suggestions and alternatives and, and, you know, sort of flexible methods of achieving a particular goal. But the little blurb that we get in our staff report every time seems to indicate that they're opting for the bare minimum, that they've always opted for, they're continuing to opt for that. I wonder if there might be some way to require them to demonstrate to us how they are complying with...
Well, that's been, that's been in some of these applications. You come in and you show us how you've complied or why you didn't. I mean, and I think that, that the minute they come in with a subdivision plan is that you have that in their packet along with you will be required to justify why you didn't comply with this or how you're going to. But it just kind of, it puts another level of, oh, I mean, I have to look at this. That's really what we want to have happen. And so I think that if you just have the same words that you've had in the applications we've had before, prove how you've complied or why you didn't.
I noticed today, in particular with respect to one of the ones that James pointed out, that the language of the TE was, you know, the applicant is proposing to comply by planting a tree in the front yard. And I think maybe, you know, we just need to find some way to suggest to them that that's just not going to be sufficient.
But the pattern we have seen the last few meetings since basically the adoption of the policy is professional advisors coming before us with a blank look on their face when we raise the question here. Do you have it? Did you read it? You know, last week we had, or last meeting, we had a professional stand before us, said, yes, I have it. Did you read it? Well, no. It's easier to do the old trick of close your eyes and plant two trees. And until we just frankly stand firm and, and either continue some of these to, until they come back and tell us how to do it, I see no incentive for them to do it.
It appears that they take it as a choice. We haven't seen it, we have seen it, but we still choose to do this one tree or two trees.
As a procedural matter, I'm not sure that they're not accurate with respect to that, but that is the posture that it is in currently. They can choose to do it or they can choose to ignore it.
Yeah.
So we may have to take some action to bump it up.
Right.
And, you know, we could, we could say, well, we don't think that's good enough. Come back in two weeks, but as long as it is simply a, an option, I think they can opt to ignore it.
And then what sense does it make for us to go through the process of...
I think that, I agree with, that it's, it's, it's a bit interesting in that it may be in some circumstances that two trees is the method of compliance. It, in some circumstances. Could very well, but could be that we can't do certain things because of topography. We can't do certain things because our streets are too short. We can't, you know, we've tried, we can't vary our setbacks because of the way the utilities run. We can't, we can do two, three, and seven. We can't do one, two, and three, or one, four, and six, some, some variation. I am, and I don't think that was intended to develop a community either that met and worked on that either, was that, that, that there would be no consideration. And so I don't know how we do that. Maybe we need to...
Well, the citizen points out that we won't have any teeth in this until we have an ordinance, until we do something that says, these, these are the things that you're expected to consider doing and tell, if you can't do them, tell us why not.
But even in terms of being presented, it may be that, that they need to be sort of prioritized options, the very bottom one being, you know, plant two trees. But, you know, if you can't do this, then you could do this. If you can't do that, then you could do this. If you can't do that, then you could do this. So that the choices, you know, the very last possible alternative is to plant two trees as opposed to, that's the one everybody chooses because it's the easiest and cheapest.
The question I have, Dan, with regard to the distinction is the storage building or Warren's application where you said you're going to, you've got an either-or option on that. And so the distinction between that guideline, right? Is that not just a guideline?
Mm-hmm.
And, and these guidelines is what? It's as far as how we present it. In other words, how are you going to do this warning, you got to do either or or? Is there, is there a different, are those policies stronger than this, than the garage front policy? Are they not? Because it seemed to be, to be, which one of these two are you going to do?
Part of it, I think, has to do with, one, we've had that materials policy in our PUD process and it's clear every time somebody... PUD process, and it's clear every time somebody comes in with a PUD proposal that that's going to be there and they either have to agree to it or figure out how they're going to address it and get around it. Maybe the way we write this staff report and in terms of what Janice is saying, "Here are the things you need to do in order to satisfy the street design curb appeal..."
Right. And I agree that that bit, because I think there's more, as I've said before, I think there's more compliance than they give themselves credit for in a lot of these subdivisions, with the curvilinear streets, with we're moving this back and forth, we're turning these lots, lots twenty-five through seventy-five, and we're planting street trees. I think that, you know, I'm frankly a little surprised at some aspects of the conversation around this, that the light hadn't come on, shall we say.
I'm guessing it's mostly just past practice, what they're used to. Nothing has happened to jump it up in front of them, that this is going to change and you're going to change with it. It's going to have to be done differently from now on. This is the way they've always done it. And unless something happens to make them realize that it's not going to continue to happen that way, then they'll just opt for that. It's almost like a box they check off, you know? That's an easy one.
Well, there's another subset in our guidelines and the other we mentioned, like street trees. I've not heard a person say, "I plan in my development to put street trees in." And the reason is because of the fact today. They're not, they haven't read it. They don't know that this is, this, and that one thing, we were dealing with garage fronts, but that one thing overcame Public Works, water, overcame fire. That whole thing is something that developers in the committee, "We can't do that." "Oh, yes, you can."
Right.
And I don't think anybody is looking at that document and really understanding that it allows street trees, you know? So, I think you're absolutely right. It's got to be pushed in front. Look at this. You've got to, you know, check the, or something like that, John, you know, that some language to really make it so that when they come in with an application, it's not just put in the packet. It's really shown to them that you've got to deal with this and read it and look and understand it because of what it does. It makes a better neighborhood.
I'm going to ask your indulgence for a few minutes. I asked Anir to stay here and talk to us a little bit about drainage and how the subdivision regulations for drainage relate to what we do. And I did that because I didn't know that the Bentwood case would come to a resolution as it did this morning. And I knew we, in the absence of that, we would have had Eric and maybe Charlie Allen talking to us about, "Well, here's what your responsibilities are as planning commissioners when it comes to drainage." And I wanted to have the staff prepared to talk to us about that. So, I've asked him if he would stay to the end of the meeting and give us at least a little briefing on this.
Anir, I agree with Public Works. I have excerpts from our ordinance, and I want to go ahead and hand it out and then kind of discuss what our responsibility is, what developers' responsibility is, and what homeowners' responsibility is as related to drainage.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Anir. Pass me down.
Chairman and Commissioners, as you have in front of you, some parts of the drainage ordinance. I just want to go through some of these, not all of these, but some of these. Just sixteen point one basically says that if you are going to do anything that's going to change any of the drainage patterns, or it can change the grading, that you have to have us review that. Second is sixteen point two says that it's, it's approximate. It's risk-based. So, even though we do our best, use best science, you may have more, hundred-year doesn't mean that it's going to only occur once hundred-year. So, that's what it talks about. And then, going over to page six, sixteen point four basically talks about responsibility of developer. And it divides drainage basin in three different categories. One is that channel, river channels, like Oklahoma River or North Canadian River or South Canadian River. Then it talks about any channel that has a drainage area more than five hundred acre, which is Campbell Creek is more than five hundred acre. So, that's a primary drainage channel. And then, the secondary drainage channel is anything that has a drainage area of less than five hundred acre. And next, sixteen five point five basically talks about engineering method, and I'm going to skip that. Sixteen point six and seven talks about how you do development if you have a primary drainage channel next to, how you improve that to make sure that you address the flooding issue and keep any structure or part of the land from flooding beyond the area that's reserved for providing drainage. I'm going to briefly go into sixteen point six. What it talks about is that if you have a development that has any part of channel that has a five hundred acres or more, a primary channel, that you have to put five fifty or Q fifty urbanized, which is fully developed condition, that channel that has to be, that fifty-year floodplain has to be put in easement or common area. That, and you cannot encroach, you cannot put any structure in there. As far as setting the building elevations, we always go for hundred-year urbanized plus one foot, whatever that elevation is. For secondary drainage channel, which is sixteen point seven, it talks about having a land that's below hundred-year urbanized, which is fully developed condition, to be in a reserved area, whether it's a common area, easement, depending on what you're doing with it, it can, city can take responsibility or it's a homeowner's responsibility. Typically, common area is a homeowner's association responsibility. Then sixteen point eight deals with rural subdivisions. Here, we are talking about acre or more lot sizes. One other thing that is worth noting in this is that we don't look at the grading of the lot beyond the right-of-way. It is the responsibility of the builder who puts, and developer who puts the structure to make sure that, for example, there's a positive grade away from the structure itself. You can elevate the structure, but if you don't have positive grade away from the structure, you could still have issue with flooding even with the smallest amount of area.
Anir, quick question.
Yes.
Either be the city responsibility or the common area. What about some of these older areas where there's secondary drainage through them? They're, they're not common areas, they're private, and the city has a drainage easement through there? Is that the private citizen's responsibility or is it the city's if there's a drainage easement?
If we have a drainage easement, then it becomes our responsibility to take care of that.
Okay. So, even though it's in the middle of a subdivision, a winding creek through the middle of the subdivision, there's a drainage easement there and there's a problem, that's the city's problem?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, going back to rural subdivisions, we make sure that the areas that are within hundred-year floodplain in case of secondary channel has to be reserved. But a lot of times, this is where we have some issues, and we've had issues in the past where some of these common areas were not dedicated properly because five-acre lot, you don't plat. And that's the mechanism we use to reserve these areas. But that is still is, if it is not properly improved based on the ordinance requirement, then it becomes a common area and that is the responsibility of homeowners' association or homeowners. And when we have issues, let me briefly discuss what is flooding. In case of street, if we have an overtopping of a curb, that's flooding. If you have water in the yard, that's yard flooding. That's, we give a medium priority. If you have water in your house, that becomes the highest priority. But also, we have to look at what is the cause of the flooding. Again, if it's just due to the grade surrounding your yard, I can do anything in the right-of-way, that will not fix the problem. If the common area is not maintained, we can do whatever, do in the right-of-way, we cannot fix that problem. So, that's the reason we have to look at what is, what is the root cause of the problem? If I just look at the symptom and don't fix the root cause, it's going to come back. So, that's one thing we are looking at. And when we look at, it's complaint-based, when we get the complaints, we look at what is that's causing the problem. And then, we categorize in different, you know, whether it's high priority, medium priority, or low priority, depending on whether the structure is being flooded, whether it's yard issue or whether it's a street issue. And which is also consistent with sixteen point seventeen, which says that, you know, it's our city's responsibility to make sure that, and I'm highlighting that portion, which says that we have to work towards taking preventive measures to reduce flood damages. Yeah. But that's what I said. It says basically preventive measures for reducing flood damages. So, that's kind of how we deal with it. And of course, a lot of these requirements, and there are some additional requirements also, is in the subdivision reg. But subdivision reg refers to drainage ordinance. So, they're like two documents that define our responsibilities and developers' responsibilities and homeowners' responsibilities. That's kind of what I wanted to talk to you in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm here.
I do have, I have one question in connection with these regulations in the municipal code. Are you, are there places in there that you could see that there should be improvements? How often are these reviewed for current science, you know, science changes when you have more data? But do you, I mean, do you think that this is adequate?
We're working on improvement. In fact, we've done, created draft. We haven't finished it, but we're working on it.
You've found places where it needs to be fixed?
This has some room for improvement, and we're working on it. We've already, we have a draft. It's not ready to be discussed yet, but once it's gone through internal review, then we'll start sharing that with everybody. But it hasn't gone through internal review yet.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Let me ask, let me ask you a question about the case we had a couple of weeks ago at one hundred and sixty-four Street where the creek ran around two sides of what was buildable real estate.
Yes, sir.
And that creek would be the responsibility of the homeowners because it's not a secondary waterway? Or does it drain a large enough area that there's some city responsibility there?
Well, there again, how developer chooses to do a development, that determines whether it becomes, see, for example, if you go back to sixteen point six, it says that if you improve that channel and all the requirement is, meets our ordinance requirement, then we can go ahead and take city easement. But a lot of times, what happens is that, and due to some of the regulations like 404 permit, a lot of times, they have difficulty getting even any kind of permit from a Corps of Engineers. So, what they'll do, they'll leave, choose to leave that alone and not disturb anything in the natural state. In cases like that, then that typically becomes a common area.
Okay. Janice?
I wanted to ask you too. I remember during the Northwest Sector Plan meetings, we had an interesting conversation about the phenomenon that occurs where homeowners' associations, particularly those that are formed primarily for the purpose of maintaining these easements, disband, and the city sort of acquires that obligation. And my question to you then and now would be, is there something that we should be doing differently with respect to either our bonding requirements or the way we set up that obligation for homeowners' associations that makes, is there something that we can do to ensure that they're going to be around to fulfill that obligation? You know, clearly, developers come in, they set up the homeowners' association, they disappear, and depending on whether or not they have many other active, ongoing pursuits, they may or may not remain an active homeowners' association. Is there some way that we can prevent those responsibilities from sort of becoming the responsibility of the city?
I think this is more of a legal question, though, I would say. But a lot of times, these common areas are based on governance. So, we have discussed that with our legal department. Like I said, in our draft, we do have some solutions that has not finished, we've not gone through the internal reviews, but you will be seeing some of those suggestions come up for comments and feedback from our, you know, everybody.
Questions or discussion? Thank you very much for, A, taking the time to get ready for this and sitting around until almost four o'clock to talk to us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Planning Department?
Just quickly, I was at the APA National Conference there a couple of weeks ago, which was very good. And I acquired the entire conference proceedings, which are viewable on video. So, if there was a PowerPoint with audio there, then all of those particular sessions are available. And I will be running sort of educational sessions at the office for anybody who wants to look through any of those. So, I just want to make that offer available to planning commissioners as well. We haven't set it up yet, but there are some very interesting sessions.
Will you be able to, like, email to us when you're going to do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, different things we're interested in?
And we'll send, I'll send you actually the, you know, the full schedule of what they have available as well. So, if you have an interest, anyone in particular, then you can let us know.
We used to be able to send a planning commissioner to that in years past. I think money's tightened a little.
We've gotten poorer. In fact, we were on, you know, we're on travel freeze right now, but I had to go because I had to meet my continuing education credits.
Well, I went to one of those meetings and it was, it was some years ago now, but it was really very beneficial.
Very good, yeah.
They run exceptionally good sessions.
They were. I was very impressed.
So, if we could ever get back to that, that would be great. Development Services Department, JJ. Municipal Council's Office. Citizens to be heard. Other business, motion to adjourn. And that's unanimous. We're adjourned.